And I think we're good, Mrs. Marcus. Thank you for waiting.
Okay, I'm going to please stand if you wish. I'm going to call for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as we are. Thank you. Okay. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. All in favor?
I'll second.
Oh, I heard the second, yeah. Okay, Dr. Braggie, can you give us a report of the closed session, please?
Sure. The board has voted-
Do we have to vote? Don't we all have to vote approval of the agenda?
We did. I thought.
No, we motioned and seconded. We actually didn't take the vote.
Okay, I'll call for the motion.
Aye.
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 Okay. Report of the closed session, please, Dr. Braggie.
Yes, the board has voted in favor, five to zero, in the settlement with the Public Employment Relations Board, charge LA CE 6619-E.
Thank you. Ms. Crashar, Mrs. Crashar, are there any comments for the open comment?
No, no comments came in.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Or is there anybody who wants to pull any item?
Yes. Yeah, I had a question on the item, so we'll just, we'll do it separately.
Okay.
As it's the only item.
Which one do you want to pull?
I think there's only one item on consent, so-
There's two. There's, there's the- There's two items. Oh, no, it's not. Okay, I'm sorry. There's only one item. You're right. Okay. Move the consent, approve the-
Wait. I thought we had questions?
The first one is to approve the consent calendar, which is the memorandum of understanding on the Amwest ambulance. Do I have a motion to-
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mary.
I'm sorry. I had some questions on that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So do I.
Go ahead. Discussion, questions?
Just for the record, I seconded the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Now we can discussion. Mary, go ahead.
Okay. Well, with regard to the program on the district end, is there, I mean, how will it be implemented on the district side? Like, who, how will we be physically making the space available? Who will be doing the staffing for that? How will you staff it? Also, will we need security for that? Has that been determined? I read that in the MOU. And is there any sort of budget or estimate for what this will cost? I know that it's been mentioned that this would be covered by COVID funds, but what would the cost of doing this for the district be?
Do you want me to jump in, Dr. Braggie?
Sure, yeah.
So, we've determined that the district office is going to be our center for vaccinations. Though we walked through the district office and identified the boardroom is going to be the, the place where we get the vaccinations. The superintendent's conference room and the employee lounge will be the observation rooms where people wait their 15 minutes. We all do the sign-ins outside in the courtyard or in the lobby if we have inclement weather. I've walked it with Ken. We have the signage. We're going to have the signage ready to go. The parking will be in the swim gym. We'll have egress and ingress for the employees. And I'm working with Ms. Chisholm. She and I are kind of the administrators in charge over the program. Spoke with Scott this morning. We will have security in the lobby just to make sure that the people that are coming in are either coming in for the vaccine. If they're not coming in for the vaccine, to get them routed to their appropriate location. The Amwest charges are fairly minimal. It's like $85 an hour for their technicians. They're going to send four staff members. We will have one clerical person there at the registration desk just to verify identities, just to make sure who's coming, our district employees. But they have to bring ID and things like that anyway. So there won't be too much of an impact on, on our staff directly. So, you know, how, how much it's going to cost, it will really depend. A few hundred, up to maybe $1,000 every vaccination period time, just for their staff. There's no cost for the vaccinations. That's, you know, covered. So it's fairly the minimum cost to the district.
So if the COVID dollars, I thought the COVID dollars we currently have are already allocated, so are we anticipating that we'll receive more COVID dollars?
Yes, yes. Actually, we did have some additional allocation left over from the SRT2 funds. But as you've probably heard, tomorrow, I think the, the state of California is going to approve some legislation of some billions of dollars for schools. About 1.1 million for our district, or maybe a little bit more, for things like the testing and safety, PPE. And over $2 million for learning loss mitigation. And I think Dustin's going to have a report for the board next week on that. So, so I'm not too concerned right now with the budget.
Okay, so just one other question then is really about, has the district evaluated what risk or potential liability to the district there would be for administering the vaccine? And have we talked to an insurance consultant or what have you for, to see what coverages we may need on that end?
So we've been directed to do this by LA County Office of Education. We've got the tentative okay from Keenan, our cover, our, you know, insurance administrator, if you will. And then we would be covered through our contract with American Amwest, but we're not, we're not actually going to administer the shots, I'm sure. Regardless of whatever contract we have, if someone got sick or someone unfortunately passed away, would we get sued? Most certainly, we would get sued.
So do we increase our insurance for that?
No, no, no. I, I think that we wouldn't have the ability to do that because we're in a JPA and our insurance is set. So we don't necessarily have the ability to go buy additional coverage for this kind of activity.
But you talked to Keenan about it with regards to mitigating that risk?
And there's multiple districts in the area that are doing the same thing, so.
Okay. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, Noah?
Yes, thank you. So, how many hours are they going to be here per Friday?
This, this Friday, they're going to be here a little bit longer. They'll be here about 11 o'clock and they'll stay till 5:30 or so. So this, this period will be giving vaccinations from, say, 1 to 5. But most likely, it'll be a little bit shorter in the future if we still only have 50 vaccinations. But if we get an allocation of 100 vaccines, we can expand it a little bit. So we have flexibility since it's here at the district office. We won't interfere with any classes going on, so this is probably the best place to have it.
Okay. No, my concern was the, the funding, and you've covered that question. But I just wanted to know, in the future, there's a finite number of Fridays they would do this, correct? Because we have a finite number of teachers. So there was nothing in the, in the contract or in the MOU, but do we foresee this? Is this four Fridays in a row? Do we have any idea? Or until everybody's been vaccinated on staff, is that-
Yeah, no, not necessarily. They may not be every Friday. So, for example, if next week we don't get an allocation, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a vaccine clinic.
So it's only by, it's only by allocation?
Right. It's really dependent on that allocation.
All right. And my other question was, what are we currently doing with our healthcare staff at the high school and the middle school? And could they be of any assistance in this while our school, those schools are not open yet?
I am not sure.
Would that help at all?
I have not reached out to them. Matt, do you have?
Good question. Laura obviously is in charge of those folks, but I think, Mr. Margot, to your point, I think that's a, it's a good thought. And I think we'll definitely reach out to them. I will research tomorrow, but yeah, they've not been on my radar, but certainly couldn't help having extra, extra medical folks around.
Yeah, and- Or replace paid staff. We're paying them anyway.
For sure.
Yeah, and so I talked to Laura about that too, as far as, you know, utilizing them even at the elementary school too, just to, you know, ensure that if there is, you know, a student that has a temperature or there's a, you know, that we're, that we're, you know, best utilizing our healthcare staff, even the assistants.
Yeah, I was just going to say that while everybody's coming back there, that is, once the elementary, it's pretty much all hands on deck when the elementaries come back.
I'm not talking about the elementaries.
Yeah.
Talking about middle school and high school. If they're not being utilized.
No, I'm saying everybody. So, everybody is going to be routed to the elementary schools.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so the high school, any extra folks that we can have, that will be supporting, supporting those first few days, certainly. But I hear a point well noted about our Friday vaccination clinics.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
One last thing I just wanted to add is that I just, when I was, I mean, we got this MOU like this morning or late last night, I believe, because it was attached to the agenda. And it just would have been nicer to have received this earlier. It looks like it was signed on the 23rd. So in the future, if we could get these things earlier and have, give us more time to be able to review them, I'd appreciate it a lot.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
That was a comment that I made, as you recall, when I first got on the board also, so that I had completely in agreement with you on this, Mary. Okay, anybody else have any other comments on this issue, on this item? If not, I'll call for the question. I'll do a roll call on this. Mandy?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Mary, Mary?
Yes.
Tristan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, 500. Okay. Okay. Moving on, I would like to motion for the appointment for specialized Army Armed Security Agent Services with NASDAQ International Incorporated.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, who moved? Tristan, you moved forward, and I didn't mean to read it. I thought, okay, Noah.
I second, yeah.
Okay. I am going to take the lead on this one because I have lots of questions and I'm gonna, and I usually wait till afterwards, but I think this time I'm going to start out, if it's okay with all of you. And I don't think any of you would disagree with that. The first thing that I would like to know is, has this contract been compared with the previous contract that we got? And does it interface and compare and go along with the new manual that we got? So I'm concerned about those two items. If it's, how much is it different from the first one that we got, that we approved in December of 2018? And also, how it works with the new manual?
I see. Do you want me to take that, Wade?
Yeah, Don, if you could start. I gave the board a little synopsis of the small changes that I saw, but you can talk about the history of the original contract better than I can.
I think the overall history of NASDAQ's relationship with the district, the first contract, well, actually, the first agreement was a professional services agreement to get them on, onsite on the district. And it was a- for me and my staff. Hello?
I couldn't hear you, Don. I don't know if anyone else was-
Is that better?
It's probably better that if we don't see you, we can hear you better.
Okay, I'm, I've got my video off.
That's better.
Thank you.
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. I'm not in a snowstorm yet, but the weather where I'm at at 9,000 feet on my mountain where I live here is a little chilly. So, what I was saying is that the relationship with NASDAQ was to get them onsite, and it was like an MOU, for about 10 weeks. The purpose of it was to provide time for me to issue and go through a process of a, an RFP. And so they were providing services in that interim period. So we developed a contract that was submitted and provided for the RFP process. We did two of them. The first, the first RFP that we did went through all the process and some of the pricing and some of the, we wanted a larger scope. We wanted to reach out to more service providers. So we did a second RFP and had much more participation. When that was completed, the contract that you have in front of you, to be clear, is not a NASDAQ contract. That's a, that's a Beverly Hills Unified School District contract. So it was developed and written specifically having in mind ultimately collaborating with the, the policy manual. So to answer your second question, the contract is, has in, has in consideration the duties and responsibilities for the unity of force for the armed guard component. So the answer to that is yes. In terms of the contract that's before you, really simply, I'm not sure what Wade you've, you've shared, but the big picture, let's call it the Cliff Notes, is between the last two contracts and this contract, the ones in front of you, we negotiated a few major things. One of them was that the contract would be not a lump sum, but it would be an hourly rate schedule, number one. Number two, we wanted to be sure that the district's spectrum controlled over all aspects of the contract, meaning it's not just hours or dates or time. You can add hours, take out hours, change work scopes based on what is on the ground or what is being developed on the ground. So that's number two. The next piece that I think is critical is we negotiated what we call a type one indemnification agreement. And it's very rare in order to negotiate that, what it means for a type one indemnification agreement essentially means, the NASDAQ is responsible. I'm sure if you'd be able to read the indemnification clause.
Done.
That's, that's what- The next was, we negotiated, we doubled, yes.
Done. Can I ask you, so we, again, it's not, we can't, yes, we can't hear you. So can you just maybe sign right back on, just jump off and just come right back on, see if that connection helps?
Is that better? Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yes.
So, I'll just go briefly and I can answer more specific questions. The demunification clause was, we, we negotiated, which is the most comprehensive indemnification clause that we would have with a contractor. We asked them to double their liability insurance, so we have what we call a 10 and 5, 10 comprehensive and 5 per incident. So those were the general things as the contract developed, that we wanted to be sure that going forward, that it, that it complies or is embedded with the policy manual for unity of force, as well as making sure the district has complete opportunity to assign staff, assign hours, change rates, change anything having to do with what we call is the scope of work. And that would be Dr. Braggie.
Okay, so you mentioned this, and I'm just going to go back on. You said, whose contract is this then? Is this NASDAQ? You said it's not a NASDAQ contract. You says it's our contract. Is that correct?
What I'm saying is that it's the district's contract and we negotiated it with NASDAQ. In other words, simply put, NASDAQ didn't give us their proposal. We gave them a contract for them to negotiate and sign.
Okay, so this is basically our contract for them?
Yes.
Okay. So who, can I ask, who developed this contract and revised it from the last one? Who were the people that actually worked on it? Who worked on this contract and really wrote this revision contract? Because I don't, I wasn't around when the first contract was signed. I came, that was just when I came on the board. So I, who actually did all the work on this contract and for our district?
I wrote all of them. The assistance was with, in this case, with Brandon, to be sure that this contract interfaces with, with the policy manual. So he contributed. And in all cases, legal counsel finalizes all of the issues that have to do indemnity and the district's liability.
Okay, thank you. Brandon, how good, okay, and I know Brandon. These are, this is a little more specific question. A couple of things that I noticed, that El Rodeo is listed as, and I noticed that it's in two places, is having two guards in one place, and then it's not listed in another. It's, I'm assumed that there will not be any guards, armed guards, at El Rodeo during, during the length of this contract. Unless we actually need it at that point, is that correct?
That's correct. That's a good question. What you see in the scope of work, there's breakdowns in attachments. That's the template. And that would only be used as directed by Dr. Braggie. And what we have in the current timelines and the rates relate to just the two schools. But we included the template because it's the same and gives Dr. Bragg the opportunity, in the event schools open at the high school quickly. We don't know if we got the word and we had to open up particularly the high school or the middle school, we were able to act quickly and not do another contract or an amendment to the contract.
Okay. It mentions your name in this contract as the contract administrator. Are you our contract administrator?
With regards, that's how it was started. That's what we began with. And so my responsibilities at that point in time was to be sure that the armed guard component was consistent with the board's expectation for the security program.
Yeah, just find it, I was just curious to know why there's a name there with it, in case something, God forbid, should happen. Your name would be there with it. That's why I was wondering why it just doesn't say to contact the contract administrator, per se. Even though we know it's you, but it may not be you in the future, at some future time, five years, 10 years from now. That's why I was curious to know why that, for that reason, that was just something that I, I wondered about.
That's a, that's a good question. We were just carrying forward what we had previously been able to negotiate. And the expectation is someday, I would be living in Colorado, retired again someday. And of course, when that time comes, then the entirety of the security program would be completely operated and managed by the district.
Okay, another thing I noticed, in your listing of the schools and the hours that are there, in one place you list the hours like from 7 to 4, and yet in another place you list them from 7 to 5:30, where you have, you have, there's, there's an error. I don't know if it's an error there or it's just something that's overlooked, but the hours don't match up in the two portions of the, the contract. That's 7 to 5, 15:30, and one says 8 to 16:30, and yet in the other portion that says the hours are from 7 to 4, I believe. There's, it's not, it's not absolutely clear what that is. I think that needs to be, and the, and the pre, coming up, if it lists the what's rest of the school year, especially now with the elementary kids coming back, do we continue to have guards during the spring break when there are no kids in the school? That would be a question that I have. And I think that's about, I would like about the spring break and then the difference in the hours to be, can you speak to that?
Yes. And that's something that is, is an oversight, but the intention was not, the contract is not intended to say only these hours or you can't start before or you can't work after. It's a slot of time that's basically an eight-hour period. Whether it's 7 or 8, Dr. Braggie will set what those hours are based on the conditions that occur. For example, in the past, we had the armed guards onsite during the drop-offs. We don't know yet about, I don't know about drop-offs or what the plan is for the drop-offs. So the intention here was to provide a, a period of time that would be, again, the intent and the language of this is to be directed by Dr. Braggie, based on circumstances.
One last question. We've been on break, and of course, we didn't know when we were coming back and so on. And this is a question for Wade, I would guess, was this ever figured into the budget that if and when we came back, that there was money put in the budget for armed security?
Yes, President Marcus. Originally, we, we had in the budget almost just shy of $1 million for the NASDAQ contract. And as the years progressed, we've reduced that and reduced that. So we still have in the budget a little bit over $200,000 for, for their contract. So we've left money in the budget for NASDAQ.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So yes, so we started the year with just under $1 million. That's generally what the NASDAQ contract's been running. And then as the course of the year has, as we've gone through the year, at first interim, we reduced the, the amount in the budget because we didn't use it for the first part of the year, and we've reduced it again. So there's somewhere, and I can't tell you the exact number, but there's somewhere around $200,000 still budgeted for NASDAQ for the remainder of the year.
Which we might be quite short on. If the high school comes back and what we're now anticipating for the elementary schools at this point, we will, might be, and for Beverly Vista, we might be a little bit off in our figures in that case.
It's, it's possible. We have a little bit of wiggle room. We didn't have a lot of overtime for our own security, and that's the same budget. So we may move some things around, but there should be enough.
Okay, all right. I've said my piece. I'm going to go to Mandy. Your turn, Mandy.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Noah?
You're on mute.
Thank you. The, the schedule that's in the contract right now, two guards per elementary campus, is, we never, we never really got a chance to discuss the hybrid version of returning to campuses with our security program in general. And I'm wondering if it's overkill at this point with half the kids on campus, to still staff it up as if it's a full regular school day. And I know we're not going to discuss those in open, but I'm wondering, are these, are we committed to this entire program as written in the contract, or is this flexible?
It is flexible to your point, Noah. But the, the concept, and we don't necessarily, I don't think you are either, comparing guards to numbers of people. Generally speaking, it's the site, whether there's 10, 20, or 400. It's still, the concept is to provide security at the site, and that, that's the basic concept. But yes, it's flexible.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I respect that, Don, and I, and it's not, that's not why I was asking. I was just wondering, since we are in a constant state of flux with the county, and let's say we have to quarantine and close school down for a couple of weeks, all like that, will we, are we flexible with, with the staff? That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yes, the contract has a provision, a contract has a provision that if- Yes, the contract has a provision, a contract has a provision that if that, let's say something terrible happens, the numbers go up and then we, we, um, we're, we're back sequestered. The contract is a provision that it's not a penalty and we're not paying whether they're there or not. It's under two locations. Four should more.
Okay. And then I think my last thing was the contract also only goes through June.
Correct.
Those of us that were mentioning earlier about, you know, your name being in it is tied to anything, we, I assume we're going to renegotiate over the summer for next school year. Is that the plan?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mary, it's your turn. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, I have a few questions. I think my number one concern is that, you know, we just received an 88 page contract to review and we have, you know, 28 hours. And I don't believe that that's a sufficient amount of time to adequately review this contract before we are asked to call for a vote. So I have an issue with that. I, you know, that's really my overriding issue right now with regard to that. In my brief review of the contract, I can say that I do have some issues with that. We've already started talking about that with regards to the, I would say the scope and the budget of the project. I feel like there's some, uh, it, it's not very clear and that it could be much clear, much more clear. Uh, there's some discrepancy in there in the way that the contract is worded or written that it, it makes it seem vague. Uh, I know that you want the contract to be flexible, but the, the fact that there is so much, there's discrepancy in there and it's not, that, you know, the, the bottom line is that I don't believe right now the scope and the budget is very clear. And that's another issue that I have. I think also another thing that I see in the contract is that it feels like in some way, the, the way this is structured right now, there is a, it sets up a conflict of interest and that's very concerning to me. And I'm concerned about the transparency and, you know, overall, how the cost will be managed. And I could see this could just really become a runaway train for the district with regards to costs and expenses. So I would really like to ask that we either wait on voting on this item so that we can clarify it more and we have more time. I think it's also difficult right now, Don, that you've kind of come in and out with your wifi. And for me, I'm not comfortable voting on this. And if, and if we do vote, that would, those would be the reasons why I'm voting no at this time.
Okay.
Okay. I, I think something important to keep in mind is that, that back in 2018, when we introduced the NASDAQ team to the district, it was just after Parkland. And it was because of that, that we felt the need to have armed security. I think the boards in, in all iterations over the last, you know, three years have fully supported this program, fully gotten behind it. And even this board in our approval of the manual for security protocols and procedures. I think it's important to have continuity. I understand that we decided not to have armed security on campus because we didn't have students or large numbers of teachers, but I think it's absolutely imperative that we have that going back, starting, I'm, I'm assuming that the fourth and the fifth is because that's when the teachers are coming back into the classrooms to set up their classrooms for the elementary grades. Is that right? Why it starts on the fourth and fifth for security? And I know it was mentioned that that was also for vaccines.
I don't have the answer to that one, Tristan. I don't know what the, what was behind that.
Dr. Bregy or Dr. Horvath, can either one of you? That was my assumption. I felt that that was logical since the teachers were coming back to campus. So that, that was my.
Well, there was, there was also just training, getting back and meeting with principals and just, you know, just getting, they've been gone for almost a year.
Right. So re-familiarizing themselves and that's, and I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I think that's fine. I think it's imperative that we have it for continuity again. As I said, I think that making sure that we have this through the end of the school year is important. I also don't think though, that we should wait too long to start renegotiating because if we have summer school on campus in some physical way, we're going to need to make sure we have security for that too. So I don't want to be short sighted on this. I think while I'm fine voting to confirm that this contract today for this time period, I think we can't really wait to begin, you know, writing the next one for the summer and the fall. I don't really have any issues of, in terms of transparency. I think every contract has been on the agenda for the public, for public scrutiny and for us to review. We've noted a number of differences between the last one and this one. I think so far, as, as far as I can tell, all of them are to our benefit. I think we know what the budget is really maximally because that's, that's presented for full-time staff for two people at each of the campuses. I actually was gonna say, I, I, my question is why are we starting at 7:00 AM when students don't come to campus until 8:30? I know that staff come a little bit earlier, but that seems to me like an exorbitant period of time in addition to the afternoons. I don't know why we would stay until, you know, 5:30 in the afternoon. I don't know why we need eight hour days. Personally, I don't think that's necessary given the abbreviated duration of the day that we have, you know, kids and staff on campus. So I think that's something maybe we should revisit, but as long as, and what I've heard Mr. Blake say is that is part of what Dr. Bregy has the flexibility to adjust. So I would say to the extent that we can be conservative in the amount of time and money that we put against having coverage on our campuses in this timeframe, I think that would be a good idea and I'd like to see some, some flexibility and changes made there.
Tristan, can I just add, add so like because of the arrival then for middle and high school, we, we just put a range on that start and stop time because, because there's just different start and stop. So that's just a flexibility piece that we're gonna work around.
Okay. That's great. Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I know that in the budgets that we've approved, there has been security funds in there. So I'm not, I don't worry about the cost of being able to cover it. I think that we've already, you know, considered that. I would say if there were ever to be, you know, time and a half overtime for something that we had not planned, I'd like to know about that in advance. I don't want surprises, but I think that it's fairly well captured in this contract. So I'm, I'm in favor of it and I also, I think, I appreciate that there's a, you know, timeframe that it takes to go through. It is a long document, especially when you're comparing it to documents of, you know, the past that, that we've approved. But I think when you have kids coming back to campus, especially in light of why we started this program and our commitment to it, that it would be imprudent not to bring it back so that our staff and students are protected. So I don't have it, I don't really have any questions other than that.
Um, in, in support of what Mary has said, does this contract have to be improved in order for us to bring the guards back for sure? Or can it be done with some kind of a provisional thing in so that maybe we could have the guards there and it would be on a provisional basis, based on us giving her a chance to read the contract a little bit more and have more time with it? I'm just asking that as a possible question to accommodate, because it, it was presented quite late and more, a couple of members have seen it in the past in some portion, as did I a little bit. So I just wonder about that.
President, President Marcus, as your CBO and your risk manager, I would say it's not a good idea to have a contractor on campus without an approved contract.
Okay.
You know, it, it just, it just opens up too many.
I understand what I was saying. Some kind of way that we could do it and have both. Mary, you wanted to say something?
I mean, I'm not sure why we couldn't have some sort of an MOU or a short-term agreement in the interim while we had more time to look at the contract.
You would still need to, with all due respect, you would still need all the insurance components of the, of the contract, or a majority of the contract. So you would still need about 95% of the language to protect the district. So.
I mean, I'm just not really clear. I, I looked at this morning when you sent me the previous contracts, I, I had a chance to look at them briefly and, and I feel like those contracts are eight pages and this contract is 88 pages. I mean, there's a vast difference.
And the prior contract actually was longer. It was 118 pages.
Yeah. The original contract.
Maybe I didn't see that one, but the many documents you sent me this morning. So it just, you know, to get, to get that many documents this morning, that's what I'm referring to in terms of transparency. I just feel like to receive that information now and be asked to, to review that and to be able to vote on that in a meaningful way, it's just really requires some more time. And I, I don't believe that that's really, you know, the good governance, quite frankly. I really don't. And there's a lot in that contract that I, being a new board member, I have questions about. It's, it may be easier for Mrs. Marcus and Mr. Margot and Mrs. Walker Schuman to be able to review, but for Amanda and I, this is, you know, this is a lot of information. It is, you know, as Wade has said, it's in terms of for NASDAQ, it's a million dollars a year in terms of its contract, what it could be costing us as well. I'm not sure, like where do you incorporate in the fees for the contract administer? Like what are Dawn's fees with regard to our security program and how does that fit into, to the budget for the security program and how we sustain it? So I'm, I just, I have quite a few questions with regards to that and I don't see why we couldn't have either an interim contract in, in the meantime, because to be really clear, I do have as a priority that security of our students and their safety. And it's not that I don't want us to have the armed security guards there and I want them there when we open and I don't want to delay that. But at the same time, I don't want to be put over a barrel to, to approve a contract under these conditions. It's really not right.
Can I, can I say something, Rochelle? Um, Mary, my suggestion would be, this is a short-term contract. It's a three-month contract. There'll be a much larger, more involved contract coming back to us for both the summer or the next fiscal year. Perhaps that we can focus on making sure that you are satisfied and have time to review that one before we vote on it. We can't control all the elements that this pandemic throws at us and in trying to get the teachers back on campus and time everything right, we knew we had to get this done and mobilize in, in the correct amount of time and time's up kind of for us to do this, especially if we're getting NASDAQ on campus in the next two days. That would mean they start tomorrow for some training. So my recommendation is it's a, it's a three-month contract. We let this one ride. We, I think we've asked enough of the officers have been around long enough to have pulled out the issues, the main issues that would affect us in far, as far as liability, flexibility and other things. And I, and I do also want to state that I don't think there's a transparency issue. I think it's a timing issue. And I do understand how a 90-page document is, is very overwhelming in a day. I do, I do, I can respect that. I obviously have reviewed most of this in the past. You don't have that luxury and I, and I will respect what you're saying, but I do want to reiterate this, there's nothing, there's nothing non-transparent about this process. It's just a timing process. Everything is out there for the public to see and remains out there for the public to see and continue to ask questions about. So I just want to be clear that, that I don't, I don't think staff, NASDAQ, the board, anybody should ever be labeled as not being transparent in this process. And many, many times in the past, and Michael knows this, we, things have come to us late or even post when they were supposed to. And we always kick up a cloud of dust when that happens. And, and so I do understand your frustration in that regard. But my recommendation is for us, in order to maintain the safety and security for the students and staff, like you said, is to move this along today and then really take a closer examination of it as we move into the next larger contract. Thanks.
All right.
I also want to add one thing. This is not a million dollar contract.
Wait, Mary, did, did Mary save and then call on you, Tristan? Mary?
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just, I have to respond to what you said, Tristan. I, I understand that what's listed in there right now is for the 15 weeks for, I think 146,000, but as well, there can, you know, other things will come on, obviously the high schools will come on and the middle, the high school and the middle school. At what point are we managing those costs in terms of, you know, is it two security guards, is it one? I know that that's what Michael will be doing. It doesn't really say in the contract, like where that oversight is. It's really just about the contract is what I'm talking about. And ultimately, you know, if it were a year, the way that it's basically laid out, it's about a million dollars.
Right, but it's not. It's only, it's only until the end of the school year and then we'll come up with another contract for the duration of the summer and 21, 22 school year.
Right. Do you want to say something else, Tristan?
Um, I just, I think that it's important. I mean, these are all good questions and it's good conversation to have. There are times that we have to, as Mr. Margot said, make, you know, deadline sensitive decisions and this is one of those times. But in terms of oversight of the contract and the expenses, I think that's really the responsibility of the superintendent and the, and the CBO. That's not a board responsibility. It's ours is to oversee the expenses as they come to us, but, but in terms of, you know, making sure that it's on budget or expanding it to include all the schools as they come back online, that's not a board, that's a superintendent and CBO role.
I understand. I just, it's not in the contract that way, as far as I could see, which just brings me back to the point, either it is and I didn't see that, but I, I don't see that, I didn't read that in the contract.
I think it's clear that Dr. Bregy controls the additional officers and the timing of the officers on each campus. I know certainly in, in the last year, we had, you know, when we, when we closed in March last year, we had a conversation about how many staff to keep on the campuses without students because we didn't know how long it was going to be and we had to make reductions then. I mean, it's, it's just kind of, you know, things like that we have to do, we have to manage as they come up. But the assumption on a normal year is going to be that we have a certain set number of staff at every campus. So how we respond and how flexible and fluid we are when there's something like a pandemic or we close the schools or reopen, you know, I think those, we have to be flexible with. And I do see a fair amount of responsibility.
There is a fair amount of that in the contract.
Right. For Dr. Bregy.
There is a history here too, though, I just want to point out, because I don't, I don't disagree with the conversation at all. I mean, I think that, you know, if we can improve our contracts, that's, we, we should be able to do that. And, and I think by, by looking at this one, you know, and spending a lot of time on, on what areas need tightening and, or if there's areas that need to be loosened a bit, I think is, could be time well spent, you know, as the next one's being developed. We're fortunate that we have a, a history with the flexibility and so, which is, you know, quite unusual, but the partnership is, we've just been able to demonstrate throughout a lot of different experiences since 2018 where they've been very responsive to us when we've needed somebody additional or that we've needed to remove people from certain areas too. So I, I agree with everything that's being said about tightening this up, but I, I do think I'm, what I really pleased about this is that the, the flexibility that we have to bring additional people on and to, to change the hours, they've done that since the first day.
I think we've had a very good discussion about this also at this time. I think everybody's been able to discuss, bring up points and get some information that they need. And I'm, as I, Mary pointed out, I'm only sorry that she did not get it in time to get as much out of it as she could before she's being asked to vote. And I really do respect her right to vote the way she feels and I would not say anything. I really feel that she has to vote her, her conscience on this and so I would like to call for the question now, unless there's any more discussion. Mandy, I haven't heard if you had any questions? Do you have anything that you wanted to ask?
No, I mean, I can appreciate the list of, of how things have changed, you know, now compared to the 2018 one, and I, I read through that. I mean, I, I wanted to know a little bit more about when it was mentioned, section eight point 15.4, the new COVID related language. I was just curious to see what that, like a larger macro level, what that would be like.
I.
Anyone?
Any answer for that, Dr. Bregy? I don't.
So President Marcus, members of the board, they added a whole section regarding the, the ability of the security guards to report incidents of COVID, if a security guard has COVID, what he or she should do. So it's basically mirrors a lot of the, the county protocol around, around COVID. So it was just something necessary for this contract to be.
They, they have to report back to their organization as well. So it's just, it's, it's transferring a lot of that information back to their own corporation as well. And we will then, we, just like any, anybody on our campus, we have to report that information.
Okay. I'm gonna call for the question then if there's no other discussion or any other question. any other questions. Okay, I'll start with Mandy.
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
Tristan?
Yes.
Rochelle is yes. Okay, so a vote of four to one, we approve the NASDAQ contract. And I guess that's about it for the meeting. I don't think there's any other business. We have the meeting, we have our meeting on Tuesday. We're going to meet in person Tuesday. As you all recall, we voted to meet, and I believe that we're going to have Zoomless, Zoom to start. Is that correct? I believe. And we'll be coming over to the Churney Lecture Hall to continue the open session, if that's, everybody knows about that. And he can put that out there for everybody to see. Any other questions or not? I guess that called meeting is adjourned. It's 5:32. I want to thank everybody for their participation and being here and taking the time. I think we were able to get everybody's questions and get it out there. So thank you again, and have a nice week, what's left of it.
Thanks, everybody. Bye bye.